My hair, what do you think?
Nice. Have you talked to Marcos about his haircut?
No.
Looks, looks like Ramon got one, too.
You guys are strutting your stuff tonight.
Hi Mayor, so we are now live on YouTube and it looks like everyone is in the meeting and on, so.
Oh, great. We're all here. And we have our, our, our city clerk is here, our full complement of council members has arrived. So I'm gonna call the meeting to order at four thirty-three. We are gonna proceed with our usual order of business with a pledge of allegiance led by Council Romero Worth, a salute to the New Mexico flag led by Counselor Rivera, newly haircuted, and a invocation from Counselor Abeta, also newly shorn. So if we could all rise for the pledge, the salute, and the invocation.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I salute the flag of the state of New Mexico, the symbol of perfect friendship amongst united cultures.
The Lord is my shepherd, I shall not want. He maketh me to lie down in green pastures, he leadeth me beside the still waters. He restore my soul. He leadeth me in the paths of righteousness for his name's sake. Yeah, though I walk through the valley of the shadow of death, I will fear no evil, for thou art with me. Thy rod and thy staff, they comfort me. Thou preparest a table before me in the presence of my enemies. Thou anoint my head with oil, my cup runneth over. Surely goodness and mercy shall follow me all the days of my life, and I shall dwell in the house of the Lord forever. Amen.
Are there any remembrances tonight before we get to the agenda? Remembrance that I'd like to speak to?
Mayor?
Yes, Counselor?
I would just like to send condolences to the family of Tom Katrin. He was a local lawyer and practiced law for nearly seventy years. He was a founder of various organizations, including the opera. And I just wanna send condolences to his family. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I saw that in the paper. Anyone else with a name or a special circumstance you wanna call out for remembrance tonight? Let's take a minute for Mr. Katrin and also the people who are losing to the COVID virus, the loss of life under very sad and trying circumstances. Just power heads for reference for them. Thank you very much. So, could the clerk please call the roll?
Counselor Beta?
Here.
Counselor Cassidy Sanchez? Counselor Cassidy Sanchez?
Jamie, did we hear from you?
Here. Can you hear me?
Yes. Counselor Garcia?
Present.
Counselor Lindell?
Here.
Counselor Rivera?
Here.
Counselor Mereworth?
Here.
Counselor Vielkoppler?
Here.
Counselor Villarreal?
Present.
Mayor Weber?
Present.
Did you have a corn present, Mayor?
Thank you very much. Can we get a motion to approve the agenda, please? Whoops. Too many at the same, these Zoom calls, everybody speaks at once. Counselor Vielkoppler, did you lead the way on that one?
I said move.
Okay, we have, all right, we have a motion and a second. Thank you very much. We get the clerk to call the roll on the motion to approve the agenda.
Yes, Counselor Beta?
Yes.
Counselor Cassidy Sanchez? Counselor Garcia?
Yes.
Counselor Lindell?
Yes.
Counselor Rivera?
Yes.
Counselor Mereworth?
Yes.
Counselor Vielkoppler?
Yes.
Counselor Villarreal?
Yes.
Mayor Weber?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion has been approved.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is identified as an information item. Updating the governing body on the wastewater treatment plant compliance issues and corrective actions led by Director Shannon Jones. So Shannon, why don't we turn the microphone and the floor over to you?
Mr. Mayor, thank you. City Council, thank you for your time. I think just as a follow-up, I know we've been speaking on multiple occasions on the wastewater treatment plant and our ability to re-treat it effluent. So where we're at today, the plant was able to come back into compliance Sunday. The reuse customers were contacted and we began providing that water back to them. Again, just take a second to highlight kind of a sequence of events between the discharge permit from the EPA that the which has taken the facility down at path of targeting nutrient removal. They completed a nutrient study, which also led to an to a direction for an aeration upgrade that staff has been working on. They've been before you multiple times over the past year. We had long lead times on equipment. They were asking for pre approval for pre-purchase that they've been executing. In addition to our design engineer firm on that aeration, we've made contact with New Mexico Environmental Department, whose consultant did visit our facility, put together a report that I believe I shared with the councils since our last meeting. In addition, the consultant and our design firm and our operational staff has had an opportunity to meet multiple times to really talk about the strategies that I've been alluding to about really looking at a long-term plan of how we're gonna, how we're gonna operate, how we target removal and wastewater and how we do that successfully without sacrificing other water quality and, and do it in a planned effort. So I would say where we're at now, I would see probably about ninety percent of the recommendations through the aeration project and then MED consultant and our staff, about ninety percent in agreement with what the next steps mean. They're still working through the remainder of the details to really get a good solid plan of what this means for us long-term. In addition, as it goes to reuse, we continue to work on, continuing to work on adding robustness to that system. We were able to acquire the two million gallon tank that's onsite, the pump station and the pipeline that goes to Las Capanas. We've been working for conditional assessment. We've opened the tank, did a visual inspection on that. We're getting getting ramped up to have our mechanical contractors help us to get that system revitalized. I had a chance to meet with some of our internal experts last week to look at the pipeline, the air valves, getting all the drawings together. So, so we're continuing to push hard on that. And, but I think the reason that we're here today is is there still, in my opinion, that there is, there is gonna be upsets at the wastewater treatment plant that will disrupt the treated effluent delivery. There is onsite storage on a majority of these reuse customers, but if the duration exceeds the amount of storage, it really becomes problematic. And we do hear about that. So Raul, even though we're continuing to work both short, mid, and long-term plans, I think consideration, you know, consideration to, to use impotable water, very similar to the exercise we went through last year around the Fourth of July, becomes a reality for us. And so that's the reason we called together this governing body. It's a compliance as of now. Apologize for that. The, the ability to put potable water on these, on this turf irrigation in order to save the asset is a reality for us in the immediate. And that's why we're here tonight. So I'm gonna say that's the informational update that I do have. More than happy to stand for any questions as we move into the discussion of what, of what the desire of the governing body is. Thank you.
Thank you, Shannon. If I understand, let me see if I, if I can repeat what you said, so I'm not confused as to the situation on the ground at the moment. We originally scheduled this meeting to vote on whether or not to sell potable water to the country club and to provide it to MRC. That is no longer a relevant vote because the water is now at the moment flowing. But what we wanna talk about is future contingencies, so perhaps we don't have to have emergency meetings like this in the future. Is that summarizing the situation as you understand it, Shannon?
Mr. Mayor, City Councilors, yes, I think, I think that is a good, a good wrap-up of really the situation where we're at and what, what the discussion is.
Okay. I just wanted to, in case people are tuning in and haven't got a clear framework within which to put this discussion, it's not that the water isn't flowing now, but we wanna try to have a future trigger or a set of protocols that would guide us in case this, or when the, when and if this happens again. All right, with that as a kind of an opening comment from our director, are there particular questions or comments that members of the governing body would like to either put out for discussion or address to Mr. Jones? Mr. Abeta, I see your hand first.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Shannon. Again, I think Counselor Rivera, when we discussed this at our last council meeting, had asked, but I wasn't clear, which city assets use the, the effluent?
Counselor, Mr. Mayor, Counselor Abeta, so specifically Swan Park is irrigated with treated effluent. The Marty Sanchez Golf Course is irrigated with treated effluent. And the Municipal Recreation Center, which has been a stock of builds, and the rugby field are irrigated with treated effluent.
Okay.
Controlled and controlled assets.
Okay. And then how do we get the, get potable water to them in these kinds of emergency?
Counselor Abeta, a couple of things. So Swan Park is, is in the city, is in the presumptive city limits and does have potable water infrastructure already on that site. Both, well, definitely for fire protection, so ran to there. The MRC and the Marty Sanchez are, are outside the service area. And so through the last event, what we did is we used potable water sources that were onsite at the wastewater treatment plant. In modifications to the wet well of the MRC's pump station, and we put potable water directly into their, into the wet well of their pump, and then their pump delivered the potable, now at that point, non-potable water to their site. That was never really by science. One, we weren't able to put the amount of flow into the, into the wet well that would meet their demand, and their pump had to be throttled and monitored twenty-four, seven to balance the water. So one, that the pump didn't run dry, or that the wet well didn't overflow. So we never really got that down to an exact science. I've been working with my staff. There was a preliminary look at how to extend potable water to that site. I was onsite again today with our engineering supervisor and the Water Division Director. Looking at every possible, we're looking at every angle possible of not just how we would get it there, but how can we do it consistently? Efficiently. And I'm also in talk with Santa Fe County Utility. I'm keeping them apprised of the situation because Marty Sanchez does reside in their service area. And really, the water that we're trying to target that's in the close proximity is the Buckman directed version water. And that is, so again, I'm just trying to keep them apprised of where we're at, what is communication, what are the options we're looking at, and how we can leverage that asset to provide potable water.
So if we, if we have to do it, let's say, next week, what are you gonna do? How are you gonna get it there, the potable water?
All right. So, so we know that we stumbled through one time at the wastewater treatment plant. My, right now, my hope would be is if I had to do it now, then I would scramble city crews to install a a fire hydrant somewhere along that system. I may have to use a water truck to create an air gap. A lot of these are little unknowns that we'd make up on the way. We're trying to get the answers now. But if, if push comes to shove, if the treatment plant hadn't have come back on, these would be, this was the path that I was on. In order to do that, we did call for locates there in front of the Marty Sanchez Golf Course. So I know there's flags and paint all over the place, because I need to know where the other utilities are. We're just trying to get as many details as possible. Right now, in my current thinking, the best approach to providing water would be to install a, a fire hydrant on on the MRC's treated effluent line, and then figure out a way to jump our potable water into that system and use their current infrastructure. Anywhere I can move away from using fire hose, I eliminate friction line loss. Anytime water moves through a fire hose, it loses, it loses volume because it's restricted. And that's the challenge we come up to when you're talking about providing a significant amount of water, you're restrained by that system. And so I'm trying to find the most efficient way to get that water transferred over, so I don't lose that loss. I don't incur that loss through the system, and I can maximize the delivery.
And so is this something, even though we're able to get effluent, treated effluent there now, is this something you'll continue to work on in case the system goes down in a month or two, or a week, or two weeks? Or is it just something that it's not worth doing as long as we have treated effluent going there in case of emergency, we'll scramble and, and do what we've gotta do?
Counselor Abeta, I think it was one of the last council meetings, we were having a conversation, and you made it a point that right, having, having the ability to deliver potable water and not need it is better than needing to deliver potable water and kind of making it up on the fly. And so right now, my intent is to continue to move forward with these projects, find the best, most economic and, and efficient solution, and get that infrastructure in place so that if and when we do have to deliver potable water, that we're not having to work out those details. We, we, we've created a system to do that.
Okay.
That's just an MRC.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Jones. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor. I see Counselor Rivera has his hand up.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Jones, for that. So really, if we have access at Swan Park to potable water, what would happen at the country club?
Right. Mr. Mayor, Counselor Rivera, the country club, well, is inside the city limits. There is water infrastructure that runs along both sides of their property. And there is a fire hydrant located right at the corner of their property on Airport Road. So last year, this was the point of access that we used to provide them potable water. I think that system worked relatively well. I think from a utility perspective, having the infrastructure there and being able to put a meter definitely has an advantage. Getting it from the meter to their point of delivery has been a point of discussion. I think anywhere that we can enable reuse customers to kind of own and operate that system after the point of delivery, after the meter, is, is in my best interest, and I, and I'll continue to verbalize, verbalize that. Up to the, where we get to the point where even at the, any of the reuse locations, Swan Park, we're working with Gary Varela, I believe, Rick Espinosa, the Parks, the Parks guys there, we want them to be equipped in order to do it. We, we provide the potable water, we provide the meter, and then, and then they have the means to get it into the system. For Marty Sanchez Golf Course, that would be our tent as well, that we would equip and work with, with Pat and his team there. We would have a point of delivery, we'd put a meter, and then they would convey the water into their system. My personal recommendation would be for Santa Fe Country Club, we would put a meter on the fire hydrant, and that they would convey the water from the meter to wherever they needed to in their, in their golf course.
All right. And then for MRC, you talked about putting a hydrant. When those buildings were constructed, there wasn't a hydrant anywhere on, on those grounds for the buildings, occupied buildings that are there?
Counselor Rivera, so I was again onsite looking at it. I am having to get educated on the infrastructure in that campus. I met with Pat earlier this week. He did point out there is a fire hydrant, but it comes off the non-potable water. And so when the treated effluent is moving, that line is pressurized, the pond is full, the water on. That's when we believe that that hydrant is charged. If the treated effluent line is down, we believe that hydrant is no longer effective.
That brings up some other issues and concerns, but I won't go there right now. And you said between all three, or maybe last meeting, you just said it was a couple of facilities that used about two point one million gallons per day? Is that correct?
Counselor Rivera, I would say that, that is a good number when we look at the current demand on the reuse for turf.
All right, so we're, you know, we have some of the strictest restrictions, water restrictions around, and clearly, you know, we don't allow people to wash cars in their driveways, et cetera. When we allow the country club, for instance, to tap into the hydrant and then fill up their ponds and use that, that creates some issues with my constituents with regards to any kind of water restriction. So that's some of the concerns I have. The other one was, you know, when Las Capanas was asking for drinking water to, to water their golf course, I was not in favor of that, and it was mainly because we are in a drought, so. If, if this were to happen when we were in a drought situation, what would be the recommendation at that point?
Mr. Mayor, Counselor Rivera, I, I think from my approach, utilities, I think, is a little bit of a different approach, meaning I, I get the challenge between potable water, non-potable water, what's river water? In my, in my own personal opinion, water, water is water. It's just how much money and capital have we invested to, to treat it? So right now, we're, we've had many, multiple discussions on reclaim treated effluent and how, and is the city fully utilizing, utilizing that as a source? I think when you look at putting treated effluent on the golf course or looking at putting potable water, right now for the two entities that we're talking with, the non-potable is a cheaper water source for them and for us. I think that's why one of the main talking points about going to potable water is, well, who's paying for it? Because there is a cost behind that treatment. Even bringing real groundwater back into the equation, right? If it was untreated raw river water, that has the potential to meet the, the drinking water demands of the city, we just haven't incurred that cost of treatment yet. So I think with, with treated effluent, if we, if direct potable reuse was on the table, treated effluent would be a drinking water source, right? It just hasn't been treated, and we haven't incurred that cost. So I think ma, the main discussion around should we put water or not is, is as if, as if financially feasible. I think in our water portfolio, you're right, if we were in a drought and we did not have water, prioritize where the water went, drinking water, fire protection, sanitation would be, would be the main drivers. I, I just, I would like for the, I guess, the council to kind of take away that we're already beginning to verbalize that treated effluent is a water source for the city, whether it's aquifer storage and recovery, direct potable reuse, or our return flow exchange for water rights. It, it still does have a value.
All right. And then would, would there be an effort made to continue to supply those downstream users as well during times when the effluent was not able to go downstream?
Counselor Rivera, could you be a little more specific down the, the downstream users?
La Cienega, La Cienega, La Bahada, et cetera.
Okay. I, I appreciate the opportunity, Counselor. So even, even when I read through the articles of the papers, they try to do this, they say things like, the wastewater treatment plant is shut down. I'm telling you, the wastewater treatment plant does not shut down, right? The water comes in, they treat it. If it's out of compliance, that water still goes, still goes out. They deal with MED, they deal with EPA. They take all the right measures, but the flow, the flow continues. The treated effluent users is under a discharge permit from MED, and when we stop delivering treated effluent, all of the water still goes into the Santa Fe River. We're only challenged with dealing with notifications and the conditions of the MPDS permit. Because we didn't deliver the water, we did not violate the discharge permit through the MED. If we were to turn on those pumps and irrigate, that's where we'd get into that potential. Again, because we're leveraging every possible aspect, I know both wastewater and the Parks Department reached out to MED potentially for, and did receive a temporary permit for a Class B, Class B effluent to irrigate turfs. So those, that permit is a little less stringent. And really, the intent is that if we were able to pick up a couple of days before, after, on the tell of an upset, that we could still irrigate under Class B. So the state did issue those temporary permits and the conditions of those permits. Fortunately, to this point, we have not had to exercise those temporary permits. We came back into compliance, full compliance, and we work under our current long-term discharge permits. But downstream users, when the treated effluent turns off, their flow increases. When the reuse, when we divert, take it to a golf course, that's when they see the impact on the river. That makes sense. I apologize if it doesn't.
No, it does. So if we had another incident where we weren't able to provide a treated effluent, what's the trigger date? How many days out of compliance would the the golf courses and Swan Park need to be before you wanted to go to Plan B, so to speak?
Counselor Rivera, members of the City Council, right now, like I've been communicating, the rule of thumb is, is having ten days on storage. I think ten days for each facility, it, it may impact how they irrigate. And it seems like typically, when the golf courses feel this is gonna be a long duration, they do begin to focus their irrigation on the greens that are more susceptible to early, early damage. Not as, well, maybe as robust as, as the fairways are the rough. But ultimately, having them manage the storage, I think coming out of an event like where we are today, we just came on, back in the service on Sunday. So I know they're looking to irrigate and recover from from that being out. And it does take them time to recoup their, their storage. What I would like to think is, is that we remain in compliance, we continue to provide the service, and they're able to fill up all of their onsite storage before we go into the next event. If that is the case, and they're in a good place of storage, then it is, I think it's reasonable for me to expect that, that they should be able to, at least, even if they control back irrigation, that I'm looking at a ten-day window for the treatment plant to come back into compliance, and we would just have a minor setback in, in the plans of the.
All right. So I had spoken to Gerald about sponsoring a, a resolution that called for that ten-day window that would basically leave it open, so that if this happened and we're out of compliance for ten days, you wouldn't have to keep asking us for permission to do this. It would just kick in automatically. Marcos, are there any issues with the Living River ordinance if we decided to do that and we were in a drought condition?
Well, the city code addresses or sets out two stages for drought, and it, it has different levels of restrictions for each stage. And so the Living River ordinances may be suspended in the case of an orange level water restriction, and they must be suspended in the event of a red level restriction. We haven't had reason to go into either of those drought restrictions since that ordinance was passed, but it's there, and, and it provides a process in the code right now.
And if we were there and this resolution kicked in and these other sites needed water, it would be the Living River Ordinance that supersedes?
In the case of a, a red level drought, I don't believe the sale of potable water is permitted, and I don't think the resolution would trump the ordinance in that instance. In the case of an orange level drought or stage orange drought, I think the Water Division would have to figure out how much water is available and what priorities the city has for allocating. the city has for allocating that water.
Alright, so I would be interested in sponsoring that resolution, Shannon, if you can work with Jesse on that. And we'll see where it goes with the rest of the governing body. That's all I had, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Very helpful. Councilwoman Be Hill Copley, you have the floor.
Thank you. Shannon, I I I commend you for getting this done and, you know, all back in last Sunday. And also give thanks to the employees who worked really hard on this. I'm sure they spent a lot of time trying to get everything working again. So I appreciate that very much. I I just have some, a couple of questions on something you said. You said, and I was trying to take notes, so forgive me, 90%, you said something about 90% recommendations are, I guess, completed. And did you mean compliance with NMD? Or were you speaking about an aeration upgrade? I I lost that thought. I don't. Can you go over that again?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Councilor Be Hill Copley, thank you. Yes, let me clarify that. So so even in the last meeting, I I kind of verbalized like some of the challenges. I was was directed mostly towards Effra Morales, our Plant Superintendent, where we're pulling him in right nine different directions. A lot of different ways to this be addressed. And so ultimately, what he had was a a nutrient study, right, that was given to him about how to comply with nutrient removals. He had a design firm who's designing upgrades to his aeration system that's putting in and making recommendations of how his facility will look. Then we brought in a consultant under a contract from the New Mexico Environmental Department who drafted a report and findings. And so really with these, and then there is again 20-plus years of experience that he has onsite about how his facility runs. And so, and so what I was talking to in that meeting is I was getting all of those individuals together because some of the reports, the recommendations weren't all in line. Right? One report saying empty a basin, one report saying you should fill the basin. And his gut is maybe it should be halfway full, or we shouldn't be talking about the basin. But we've been having those meetings with staff, our design engineer, NMDs and NMDs consultant, really hammering through all of the recommendations there, taking their knowledge and their perspective into account. And out of all of these different things that were put on the table, I was saying that I think about about 90% of the thought process and the recommendations across those individuals are coming into, like into agreement. So so all the different ways people think that we should do and all the things that we should do and what they're thinking, we're about 90% in agreement with those recommendations. There's just a few other points that we're working through to really get a full consensus, which even in the last meeting, I feel like what I verbalizes, even necessarily, I don't even necessarily need a consensus. I need, I need effron. Really to take the lead for me as the superintendent, I'm giving them the resources. It needs to be his decision. But it is nice when you have engineers and your environmental consultants and everybody is in agreement that this is the right thing to do. I think helps builds his his confidence and and supports his decisions. And so the 90%, what I was saying is about 90% agreement in what our path forward looks for. And we're just working through a few of the minor details of, really has to do with, right, what are the concentrations, how much food to organism balance? What flow should the basins be at? And so they're just finalizing a few of those. Continuing to hash out around the roundtable discussions about what is our plan forward to get to get us back on track to to be more dependable.
Okay, thanks for that. And then the only other thing, and I I won't ask you to take the time, but I'm very interested. You meant also strategies and long-term planning. And I think that's something that that is always important, and I'm I'm glad to know that that your group is working. And hopefully, the things that you all accomplish to that end will make a difference in in, you know, just letting the kinds of situations come up that affect our other client base, even if our client base is. So, thanks, thanks much for your efforts.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Cassidy Sanchez, you're up next.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you to my fellow counselors for asking a lot of these questions. Especially Council Rivera, I was very concerned about the issues of what would happen in drought as well. So thank you for bringing that up. Shannon, I'm just curious, how do we water our other parks? So Regal, Fort Mercy, General, or Franklin Miles? What are the systems that we use for those?
Mr. Mayor, Councilor Cassidy Sanchez, of the other, a majority of the other parks are irrigated with with potable water. It it comes off the city's distribution system.
And then we, you'd mentioned that there's a cost for potable water, so we would be charging MRC, we'd be charging Country Club. Do we charge for the effluent that is that is used at those facilities or not?
Counselor, so we, the city does charge for treated effluent generally. It is, it's led on our ordinance, it is half, this half price of whatever potable water is. So currently, potable water is $6.06, $6.06 per thousand, which sets the price of treated effluent at $3.03 per thousand. The the, and so not all of our customers are, if there's a direct benefit to the city, the governing body has taken latitude to to waive those costs. So for example, so the country club does not pay for treated effluent. The conditions of that agreement has to be that the the golf course has to be open to the public, so it is not a private club. Public can can use that. What creates that benefit is the fact that the city gives them the treated effluent. Marty sent, they do not pay for treated effluent. Contractors do. The Downs, the Downs pay for a portion of treated effluent. There is what they call the inner field, which they have historically allowed youth soccer leagues to utilize those fields, and then therefore the city does not charge them for treated effluent on the inner field, for example. So each one is a little bit different, but there is a price for treated effluent. And unless there's a benefit or direction from the governing body, then those prices are charged.
But I guess that does, you answered my other question, which is are there other users of effluent that we are not discussing here? And how, do we ever get into a situation where those users are also requesting potable water?
Counselor, yes, there is. So I would say one is contractors. So contractors are required to use treated effluent for dust control and compaction. And so they use the fill site there. When we shut down the treated effluent, we have to redirect those to the county's fill station, which is potable water currently. And I know it's it's a little bit more expensive and 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 they definitely, then the county definitely experiences the backup of contractors. It is typical for, right, four or five trucks to be lined up for water. The while the other, so we do have other agreements in place. I believe some of the other reuse customers have an alternative source of water. So whether the treated effluent is a preference or a backup, or whether they just haven't been irrigating, I did hear that the Downs were looking to, that they were commissioning, going through their pumps. So they had drawn a little bit of water. We just, we just haven't sensed the urgency. And I think that's what drives the conversation around the golf course, specifically around city-owned assets.
Right, because if it goes, it's millions of dollars to replace those greens if we let them die, correct? This was new information for me this week. I had, I had no idea how expensive greens are. So. Okay, well, thank you so much. I really appreciate you taking the time to explain a little bit more of the system to me. All my questions.
Counselor Lindell has a hand up. You're muted, Counselor.
Thank you. Can you comment on where are we in the current condition of the plant? The current condition of the clarifiers, three things, clarifiers, disc filters, and the area, aeration basins, and what is the capacity that we are at today?
Right, Mr. Mayor, Councilor Lindell, let me try to go through those. The secondary clarifiers and the work that needs to be done on them. That contract for equipment is done through Evoqua is going, is coming into the council approval process. So that is starting to show up on agendas. I think that is a public work, Public Utilities Monday to purchase the equipment from Evoqua. The aeration basin. So ultimately, there is a broken valve in the basin that has to be repaired, and the basin has to be drained. So right now, RMCI, the contractor that we're recommending to do the aeration upgrade, that is also coming forth. I believe it is also on the agenda for Monday's Public Works Public Utilities Committee meeting. And that's also the project that we've been pre-purchasing equipment for. So we're continuing to work on having equipment available when the contractor starts work. And that is anticipated to happen this summer. Doing the work in aeration basin, as I tried to allude to in one of our conversations is and that I need to do the work on the aeration basin in this summer so that that basin can be brought back on for the winter when the organisms become, begin to move slower. I need more organisms. And then the following summer, we would take down the other aeration basin and make those repairs. The work on the disc filters was was an amendment through Alpha Southwest that I felt like we just, that you guys just approved for us. And I believe Alpha was finally in the repairs on the third disc filter. If not today, that this week would be up and running. So those were, those were three. I I apologize if I missed one of your direct questions.
No, the last question was, what is the functioning capacity of the plant today?
I would say the functioning capacity of the plant is, I would say capable of treating nine to 10 million gallons per day.
And on its best day. So what's, what? Where are we right now? I mean, you want to do it as a percentage, or do you want to say on our best day, how much water gets treated? You can say it however you want.
So on average, a day, about 5.6 million gallons goes through the facility to be treated. It doesn't all come in in a plug flow. There's a diagonal curve, means it has peaking. And it probably peaks closer to about the eight or nine million gallons per day. The facility currently is designed and rated at 13 million gallons per day. The reason I pulled that back is because, obviously, I just said we drained one aeration basin as we're getting ready for RMCI to begin work upon governing body's approval. So as far as compliance, I know my staff has continued to work on that. As far as the conditions of the DP 289 for irrigation, we did come into compliance. We're still waiting on some lab results to look at the nutrients for both total phosphorus and total nitrogen, which will tell us that either we're in 100% compliance with those or whether we're still exceeding on one of those nutrients. And again, I'm just waiting on those lab results, which I expect to have within at least the next couple of days.
So if our, if that plant was built and designed for 13 million gallons to treat 13 million gallons a day, when was the last time you think that we operated at capacity?
Council and Dell, I do not believe that the facility has ever operated at 13 million gallons per day. Now again, when the facility, so again, when you look at our NPDS permit, it does lay out 13, 13 million gallons per day is what the plan is designed to do. When you look at the concentration and loadings for things like bio oxygen demand and total suspended solids, those parameters are calculated, I believe, at 8 million gallons per day. That's how they come up with the loadings. So even if the plant were to run 13 million gallons per day, the plant would be held to the same amount of limits that they would have if the plant was only flowing 8 million gallons per day.
So we're trying to get it to handle 5 million gallons per day. Is that right?
Yes, about 5.6, yes.
It's built for a capacity of 13. It typically, you know, the the best of is what I hear you saying is eight. And we're trying to get it to run consistently and consistently is, I think, the operative word here, at 5.6 million a day. Is that right?
Yes, that's correct, Counselor.
So, does that seem even feasible as a goal? If if we have one of the aeration basins not functioning at all?
Right, so Mr. Mayor, Council on Dell, thank you very much. I I can see where the math goes on that. And so, so I'm going to backpedal just a couple steps. So even though we do call it wastewater treatment, really what that facility is doing is is treating solids. Right? Its job is to take solids out of the water. And so when we look at loading and hydraulic capacities, when we talk about 5.6 MGD flowing in, a design capacity of 13 million gallons, peaking at 9 MGD, those are all hydraulic flows. Really, because because of the conservation that the city has been able to do, we have cut back hydraulic flow. So when you look at the math saying we're only flowing 5.6 million, you're saying that we should be able to do eight easily. Why does that not add up? Is because the solids concentration, the amount of solids has not decreased with with conservation, it's increased. So our ability to handle the solids that are coming in is is the challenge that we have. And at the end of the day, even though we talk about being out of compliance with water flowing out of the facility, nobody has an issue with the water flowing out of the facility, right? It's the amount of solids that remain in the water that creates the problem. That is why we invested $15 million in anaerobic digesters, right? That's why in the aeration is targeting solids reduction. And when I talked about last time, I said it didn't matter if we had 30 polishing filters, right, which would polish the water. If you're not removing the solids out in your secondary process, it doesn't matter how many filters you have. You have to get the solids out. So then really, to answer, to see where you're going with with it, is our ability to process solids that are taken out of the water is where we're investing our our emphasis. And the more solids we get out of the water, that's when your water becomes in compliance with regulatory standards.
Thank you.
On that point, Mayor? On on that point, Mayor?
Yes, go ahead, Counselor.
So Shannon, then the the new pipeline that we are looking at building and getting return flow credits from that pipeline would add to the hydro hydraulic flows, correct?
Mr. Mayor, Councilor Mary Worth, so it wouldn't change the flows coming into the facility. So all of the treatment processes that that I described, those still work the same. What we just talked about is in the pipe. So instead of flowing out the effluent channel into the Santa Fe River, San Juan Chama water would be diverted, but it would still be, it would still have, the hydraulic wouldn't have changed through the facility. Where it would affect you is in your permit limits on loading. Loading on the Santa Fe River is how many pounds that are that are placed in there. And if you divert half the water, you only apply it half the pounds. So you would very easily come into compliance on your pounds loading, right? The loading portion of your permit, the concentration portion of the permit doesn't change, and they also have to comply with that. Meaning even at a ever reduced volume, you still have to have a certain clarity in that water. And and we've yet to been able to get the state to convince that loading is is the challenge and what impairs the river. But the true, the return full pipeline would reduce your loading to the Santa Fe River, but not your hydraulics of the facility.
Thank you.
Other questions? I I have a quick one, Shin, if you don't mind. I think I'm tracking Council Rivera's request to create a trigger mechanism in the event this happens again. I wonder if you could break down to the best of your ability, and maybe it has to happen later. The costs above water the costs above water itself to deliver to our commercial customers. I'm not talking about internal customers, talking about other customers. If they're, if we were to create a trigger mechanism so that this happens in the future and we have pre-prepared to respond with drinking water, are there additional costs to setting that system up that go beyond the three dollars and three cent cost of the water itself? And could you break those down for us? And are those costs that the city would eat, uh, as a price of doing business with our customers? Or would the customers defray those emergency setup costs? Or are there contractual relationships that dictate, uh, if they're significant, they may not be significant, how the cost would be allocated?
I think, Mr. Mayor, and when you talk about, you're talking about the cost for the, for the reclaimed treated effluent.
Well, actually not so much the water as the, um, so, uh, let me, let me paint a picture. So imagine that we hadn't come back into compliance and you were describing your scramble, uh, mode to get hopefully not fire hoses, but maybe fire hoses and overtime workers and other people to establish the capacity to deliver drinking water to our customers. I'm assuming because it's a scramble, we're not charging anyone. We're doing that as a solution and we, the city absorbs whatever those costs are at the moment. But if we're trying to set up a, a contingency plan as per Council Rivera's idea, are there, are there either infrastructural costs, personnel costs, um, equipment costs, si- separate and apart from the, the drinking water that would be delivered that we will then be absorbing every time we deliver that, uh, potable water to our customers?
Um, yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I do believe if the facility had not come into compliance, um, coming out of this meeting, we would have gone into scramble mode. Um, and it would have took a, a significant amount of man-hours. Uh, we would have pulled resources from, um, from water, wastewater, um, the fire department, anywhere that we could. I think, I think continuing on the path to, to get the infrastructure in place to do that, um, so, so we're looking at the best way to, to cost effectively do that and, and do it right and do it efficiently. Um, so I think that initial capital cost, um, right now would be funded by the, by the utility. But it's my intent to empower the reuse customer, um, through, through this process that I get them into a point where they can be successful. Where if and when we needed to trigger this, they would have the responsibility to convey the water into their system. And all the infrastructure we put would just be getting the water onsite accessible for them to do that.
So i- i- in terms of what they would be responsible for paying for, where you're setting up a hydrant or some, some endpoint, and then it would be incumbent upon the customer to establish their own conveyance to take the water and deliver it to where they believe they need it, and that's not a city cost.
That, that is my desire, but we're working towards this. If they, if they need a hose, that they have a hose and, and we don't have to come up with that.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate it. That was very helpful. Other questions for Mr. Jones at this point? I see a Council Lindell.
Just one quick question. Is the, uh, $15 million digester that we are working on and purchased and committed to, does that take solids out? Um, does that remove solids?
Um, Mr. Mayor, Council Lindell, uh, yes, it does. It removes solids and reduces, and reduces their volume.
And what's the timeframe on that?
On the digester project?
Mm-hmm.
So the, okay, so the digesters have been brought online. Uh, so they are being fed, um, and the organisms that work in the digester, um, have been developed. Um, so right now, the, to completion of the project has to do with the SCADA system that brings the, uh, to the telemetry, that the gauge readings and meter readings into the control room. Um, that's still a piece that's, um, that has to be done. The digesters still need to be painted. Um, but they are, their functional solids are coming out of wastewater, um, being thickened and fed to those digesters as we speak. So they are, so they are functioning as far as solids removal.
So are they helping in this?
Uh, Council Lindell, so, um, so they do help. Um, so, so again, the solids that we're able to remove in wastewater do have to have a place to go. They can't just stay at the plant. So those are being fed to the digester, so they do help. When the secondary system and the aeration project that we're talking about, when that's not functioning right, then the solids in the secondary treatment don't settle. And if the, the solids don't drop to the bottom of the basin, I can't remove them to feed to the digester. Um, so again, the digesters do help with the solids that are settling to the bottom, that have a place to put them and to process them. The, the issues that we're experiencing is when those solids stay suspended, um, and then are carried out into the treasury treatment. And that's what our, our aeration project is looking to enhance and add robustness to.
Thank you.
Council Rivera, I see your hand is up.
Yeah, thanks. Uh, Shannon, I just wanted to clarify. You said that, um, I believe you said that, uh, each of the facilities had about 10 days worth of storage. Is that correct? So Swan Park, whose tank is, uh, pretty small, um, is that a 10-day, uh, storage supply for Swan?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, Council Rivera, um, and I know that John Munoz is, is also on the, on the line. Um, I never want to step on his toes. Um, I think that 10 days is what we're targeting. And having 10 days of storage may require them to modify even their irrigation schedule. Um, so I believe the Swan Park is about 150,000 gallon tank. Um, that's 15 feet. I think their operating range is anywhere from 12 to 13 is where they keep it. And my understanding, um, and I, I don't have John's numbers. I know he sent out after the meeting. I'm ballparking right 20. If they use 20,000 gallons a day normally, if they had to go to their storage and they could cut back, or at a certain percentage, could they get 10 days of storage out of that, out of that onsite tank? And so.
All right. So for, um, the Country Club and then for the MRC, uh, it's the same. They have enough, uh, in their ponds, I guess, for, for 10 days worth of, uh, watering if it went down again.
Um, yeah, so Council Rivera, so again, I'm not knowing the exact volumes, but I think under modified, um, watering conditions, it may only be the greens. So again, this last event, um, I believe it was the 2030. It was right at 10 or 11 days, uh, that the facility was out not delivering water. Um, and it was about at the 10-day mark that, um, you know, we were getting a lot of, you know, a lot of people were knocking on the door about we need to do something. And so, um, so that's kind of what I'm basing the, the 10-day, uh, the 10-day window around.
So really the, the 10-day trigger, um, maybe should be a little bit less than that to avoid getting into that kind of circumstance. And we can talk this offline as, as we discuss the language on this. I'm just trying to clarify for everyone before we get there.
I think you, Counselor, I understand. And, and yes, that's probably correct.
All right. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor. Are there other questions or, uh, yeah, Counselor, um, Ramarworth, I see your hand is up.
Um, thank you, Mayor. And Shannon, I know we, I think we've talked about this before, but just so we have this all in one place with this meeting, which I assume will be referenced, uh, going forward. Um, so right now we're talking about potable water versus non-potable water or the treated effluent. How long before we have other choices?
All right, Mr. Mayor, Council Ramarworth. Um, so even as, even as we alluded to in the after-action report last year, uh, we're continuing to, to work through those. Um, I, I think, again, depending on, um, there's just a lot of factors that go into it. I would love to tell you that this would be the last irrigation season, that this would have to be our second choice as opposed to our third or fourth choice. Um, you know, getting that, getting the reuse system to Los Capones up and running. Um, continuing to work with them about the potential of bringing raw river water back. As a reality, we have task orders where engineers are looking at the pump curves, um, looking at what those interconnections would look like. Um, but I think realistically, I'm, I'm going to go on a limb and say, um, I think that that potential to bring river water back to Los Capones's pond 14, if we're able to get in agreement with them, uh, could be as early as next irrigation season.
Okay, I, um, I just think it's important to capture here, uh, and for our own understanding going forward too, that, um, there are other options and there are things we need to be doing. I think you alluded to a, uh, short, medium and long-term, uh, plans. And I think people need to know that, um, those are also things that you're working on, uh, and your staff is working on and, um, can provide us help in the future. Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, ma'am. Uh, John Munoz, you have a hand up.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, City Councilors and Councilors Rivera, again to help Shannon with the answer. Um, it is 10 days for Swan Park. Um, and for the golf course, it requires about 360 gallons per day of, of effluent water. So I would say, um, again, we'll take this offline, but it probably the trigger would be more around seven or eight days versus, versus the 10 days, but we can, we can discuss that offline. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Are there other questions, uh, of Shannon, uh, at this time regarding the informational part of the agenda? We do have a, uh, an action item, which I, I guess I'm assuming is moot at this point since we are not going to be selling anybody, uh, potable water. Uh, but I do believe we probably have to take a vote. Uh, is that right? The city attorney, we need to dispense, uh, with this or dispose of the, uh, request for authorization? I think you're muted.
Oh, I thought I unmuted, but, um, I think that you could either vote it down, um, or table it indefinitely. I don't know if Marcos has a preference.
But we can't just declare the meeting over without
Correct, yeah.
taking some form of action with item eight, which is the request for authorization, which I gather is no longer relevant because the problem, the immediate problem has been solved. And Council Rivera will be addressing the future trigger for another, uh, incident if it happens.
I would prefer, Mayor, um, that we not vote it down because I think people, again, looking back on this, uh, it sends the wrong message. Um, so it's, it's probably something that we should table, um, because it's no longer relevant.
Is there a preference among the other council members, up, down or sideways? I, I don't have a preference. I'm open to whatever the, the governing body chooses to do. A, a tabling of it, Marcos has.
Let's, let's do it this way. I move to table.
Second.
All right, we have a sense of the body. There's a motion and a second to table item eight. Uh, is there discussion on this motion? Can the clerk call the roll then?
Yes. Council Cassidy Sanchez? Council Garcia?
Yes.
Council Lindell?
Yes.
Council Rivera?
Yes.
Council Ramarworth?
Yes.
Council Vihelcopter?
Yes.
Council Villarreal?
Yes.
Council Beta?
Yes.
Mayor Weber?
Yes.
Motion to table is approved.
Thank you. So that dispenses for the moment with item eight pending future considerations that'll be brought back concerning the overarching issue. And with that, uh, we are adjourned at 5:37. Thank you, everyone.